All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the May 21st, 2025 meeting of the Auburn School Committee to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start down here on my right with introductions.
Diane Boyceon, Ward five.
Quinn Gormley, Ward four.
Corinne McWigan, Ward one.
Pam Albert, at large.
Sue Doris, Superintendent.
Pat Goddard, your Ward three.
Amanda Kutcher, Business Manager.
Scott Aneer, Assistant Superintendent.
And I know we are missing Pam Hart and Adam tonight and Calvin. I'm not sure about Jay and Connor. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's, the consent agenda, which includes the approval of tonight's agenda as well as the approval of the minutes of the May 7th, 2025 meeting, as well as the certified contract for Jolene Libby, Grade Three at Sherwood Heights. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Quinn, do I have a second? Corinne, all those in favor? Motion carries. It does not look like we have anyone here for public participation tonight, so we get to move on to our presentation tonight. Dr. Doris.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Erin Towns tonight. She will be presenting information from the Iceland trip, so we're going to get to see some amazing pictures.
That was quick. We keep it speedy here.
Yes. All right. Okay. Can you hear me okay? Yeah? Oh, okay.
I don't.
All right. Hello, nice to see you all. Erin Towns, Edward Little High School. Um, yeah, I would like to thank you guys for having us here tonight to share about some experiences with some field-based programming. I'm going to be introducing you to a little bit about what I've been doing over the past couple of years that has led to that, and then our experience last month in Iceland. So for those of you that might not know, aside from teaching high school, I lead a couple of different lives. And one of those lives has been working with polar scientists out of the University of Maine. And what I do for them is I design field-based programming mainly for upward-bound students from across the country, including Maine, which puts students on the ground in Arctic environments. The idea is to introduce students to the geosciences and to help them explore different career pathways and options. One of the programs that we do, we will do three weeks usually in Juneau, Alaska. We do a lot that's related to this picture right here, which are ice scientists, a couple of young female ice scientists from the University of Colorado at Boulder, and they are cutting up an ice core right there. And so what we try to do is we try to mirror and mimic some of those things that they're doing to help students be able to practice that, although not up on the ice, you know, at that point. We made that ice, we made that ice core using a Pringles can, some coffee grounds, stuff like that. The next program that we do, we do one week towards the end of summer, in which we travel 366 miles up the Dalton Highway to northern Alaska, to Tulak Field Station, all the way up by the Arctic Ocean. That program has students living in a field-based environment, in a field station, and they get to rub elbows with actual scientists who are studying permafrost. The focus of that program is to help students to develop further field skills, and then also they are introduced to using drone technologies as well. And of course, more locally, I've been developing some programs in conjunction with the Mount Washington Observatory. We just had our very, very first program just a couple of weeks ago on top of Mount Washington and are looking to expand that program as well. Students here are using something called LiDAR, and they are creating 3D models of things. So although these guys, their favorite one, and they love this photo too, their favorite thing to 3D model is their soccer ball, but they were 3D modeling things like meteorological tools and tools used for atmospheric studies. And of course, I would be remiss if I did not mention our Maine Arctic Climate Studies course, an interdisciplinary, a multidisciplinary learning opportunity that we have offered at Edward Little, going on for five years now. It combines the studies of earth and climate sciences, visual arts, history, and global economics. We tried to relate the impacts of the Arctic on Maine itself. So this was us actually yesterday down at Poppen Beach. The students were doing a coastal erosion study. So that brings us to Iceland itself through a number of contacts and way too long of a story. I met up with a couple of individuals who run GeoCamp Iceland. And GeoCamp Iceland is a field-based, you know, program. For the most part, they had been running programs, it's very, very small, there's only about five people that work for this tour company. And they had been running programs mainly for undergraduate, like first-year college students, and instead, we were the first high school program to be able to go through that. This is our, our fearless leader, if you will. He is the director and founder of GeoCamp Iceland. His name is Ole Arn Bjornsson. He is the Director and Principal of the Icelandic College of Fisheries. He specializes in education, teaching strategies, curriculum design. He's been in the business for about 50 years, and you can tell. He's a geologist at heart, and he also started and has a real passion for vocational education. And so he has been, he's in charge of vocational education programs and has set up a number of different schools and colleges across Iceland. So we were lucky enough to be traveling mainly with him. Where the students stayed was in an actual field station. It's in southwestern Iceland, and it's the Sudan Science and Learning Center, a really, really interesting place. Here, they, you know, do a lot of studies about birds and mainly oceanographic studies. And it was really, really interesting to have the kids there. We had a group of 13 students, and they had to, as you can see there in the top right-hand corner, that is where they started their day every day. They had their own kitchen, they had to break into teams, they had to figure out who was going to be cooking, they shared responsibilities, they had chores, much like you would have in any field-based environment. And so the teams had, you know, their competitions of who could cook, you know, the best and who could actually make their money stretch the most, because there were economics lessons as well. They had to download, you know, apps on their phones that allowed them to, you know, be able to, you know, to figure out how much they were actually spending of their money, you know, in terms of currency exchange, so that was cool. And every day, our day started at the Science Center, and then we branched out from there. Every night, this picture was taken about 10:30 PM because they are on their way to having almost 24/7 daylight, you know, and so the sunsets were absolutely unbelievable, and it gave them a lot of time to bond outside and be able to like talk to each other. The group really, really became quite close. We had a variety of students that have never been out of Maine, even a couple of students who had not been on an airplane before, you know, and so there was a lot of prep work in getting, you know, them to feel comfortable enough. And the group really like kind of rallied around them. We landed about 4:00 AM on the first day, and we were able to take a nap, and they kind of soft-launched us, which was nice. And, you know, so they did a lot of grocery shopping and all of that. And then, of course, they started on the outskirts of the Icelandic island, right? Because really, it was a tour from outside in. Here, you know, what we have is the location of the Mid-Atlantic Ridge. So this is the place where there is a diverging plate boundary, where the Eurasian and North American tectonic plates are actually separating. So the students were able to stand right, right in the middle of it, you know, and run to one side and touch North America, the North American Plate, and run to the other side, and you had the Eurasian Plate. They got a kick out of that. Also with that, they got to explore the lunar landscapes, large stretches of lava fields. Here, let's see. Cultural components included Icelandic, studies about Icelandic society, religion, history, Viking and Celtic history, and lots of stories about fairies and dragons and trolls, and what you should or should not disturb there. Students kept field notebooks with them throughout the trip, they recorded their thoughts. We had them writing every single day that they were there. The country's volcanic activity allows for the extraction of hot water steam from deep within the earth, so steam is used to, you know, drive turbines, producing electricity, and it, you know, made for some good, but very, very, let's say, not pleasant smelling explorations there. The lava fields, kids were able to, you know, were able to study about all of the different types of lava rocks, which the colors actually primarily come from the chemical composition of the types of minerals that are inside those rocks. And of course, they got a kick out of making themselves look really, really strong, because as we are all aware, lava rock is very, very light. And then, of course, the most recent, you know, volcanic eruptions. There was one on April 1st, but it wasn't really a volcanic eruption, you just had some minor stuff going on. But the one in 2023 was quite something, so they were able to see the damage still left over from all of that. If we look up here on the top right, you can see the house, and I can't imagine living there, watching that lava come towards my, my house. They did, were able to visit the town of Grindavik, which was the heaviest hit in that explosion, and were able to like kind of look at like, so a very strange vibe, sort of like a ghost town, yet they were starting to rebuild that town. And we know that with these volcanic eruptions, what devastated a lot of Grindavik besides the lava was also the series of earthquakes that just like, you know, totaled everything. Students were able to look at black sand beaches, basalt formations. It's geologically a masterpiece there. It is absolute, it's always changing every single day, massive, massive landforms, and just like really, really interesting. They were able to go to their first glacier, and if I could pronounce this, I would, but I can't. And what we have here is an outlet glacier. The most famous volcano is called the Kattla volcano in Iceland. And let me tell you what, when that goes, there would be catastrophic flooding because there's an ice cap at the top of this glacier, and when the volcano blows, it melts, everything, it causes a phenomenon called a yokelhopp, and that's a story for a different day. Email me if you're interested. Yeah, but being able to see ice up front, you know, I mean, the kids were just like, you know, they were eating thousand-year-old ice, they were able to, you know, like kick around in the outwash plane. If you bit down, you could feel all that sand, like right, I mean, it just infested everything, and they got a kick out of that. And they just, and of course, everybody had to pose for their photos. There was lots of exploration, too, just, it's almost like this magical, magical storybook, right? In which they were, you know, climbing through, they had to navigate, you know, some of these waterfalls, using chains to climb up. I mean, and we had students that were really nervous about that, you know, like that was scary for some kids. And so to be able, you know, to have the whole entire group, like super support them through that process, and then they did it, and they don't want to do it again. But they were also like, there's a component of that, that they were like, oh my gosh, I did it. So that was really cool. We even had one young man here who jumped in under the waterfall that they found at the end. He said that he was trying to make the gods proud of him. This picture was actually taken by Nora Condit, who was one of our students with us, and they were able to travel to the city, Areykjavik, and it was there that they were able to like explore for a day. This is where the shopping came in, they got to go to the Settlement Museum, and then, of course, they were able to kind of get out a little bit on their own. It's a very small city, and it's very, very safe, and so we were in touch constantly. Last bit on the last day, when I asked Ole, he recommended us go on this hike. I said, well, Ole, what's the elevation on this? You know, and he says, 300 feet. I said, all right, that sounds good. 300 feet it is. 2,000 feet later, we found ourselves at the top, and the prize at the end was a really, really big one, because they were able to get into this geothermal pool situation. It was raining up there, and it did, it took us again, you know, like how do we work through obstacles? How can we do this together, you know? Remember to take small steps, just breathe, you know, stuff like that. You know, aside from that, just unbelievable. Everywhere that you go, you could snap a picture, it doesn't matter if you are a professional photographer or not, you can get these pictures, you know, to, you know, some really culturally interesting things in the world of culinary, in which we saw these huge racks of drying fish heads. And so they use them for like soups and stock and stuff like that. But it was a great group. I cannot complain about the kids one bit, you know, they, they were incredible, they pushed through, and if you had to ask them what their favorite thing was, every single one of them, this right here was their favorite thing. And right down from the Science Center was a playground, and so they went over there one night, and the entire town's kids like showed up, and they just all hung out together, which was probably, they, they all talked, they loved it, they absolutely loved it. So they made some friends for life. I could not, I would be remiss if I did not mention my best friend and co-partner in crime, Jennifer Bromfels Wardwell, who came with us as well. She had never been out of the country, you know, to Europe, so that was really cool. Aside from that, I just kind of wanted to leave you with one thing, and it was an assignment that Jennifer actually assigned the kids. She is an author and an English teacher at Edward Little, and I just wanted to read for you. This was the group poem that they put together, a piece of poetry. It's called "Found." "I find a hug in this nature. Grief leaves my body, finds a new home, where it looks and waits. Each step a reminder, a testament of strength and resilience. I call them friends, all of the challenges we face together, how beautiful my life can be when I step out of my comfort zone. The fog rolls away, showing us beautiful landscapes, showing us what we're capable of. We talk, we laugh, we take pictures, one step after the other. I ask for one piece of advice, he tells me, follow your dreams. She says, take small steps, control your breath, and have the mindset that you can do it and will. In the afternoon hours, we find the river. The mist splashes our face. The sun hits the water just right, and a deafening roar surrounds us. Waterfalls, beaches, locals, folklore, food prices, so much to experience, so much to learn, none of it to be trapped within the four frames of a picture. Every struggle, every hardship fades away, nothing else matters. No words in the English language can do the feelings I felt, and the days spent in the South justice. Taking the plunge, knowing creatures from the world beyond would be delighted. This land builds connections through all the little struggles. I look to my friends, each step becoming a testament of strength and resilience. We reach the bottom, new souls taking one day at a time, everything better than before. We sung, took photos together, danced, played with the locals, and when I return to school, I'll wave at my new friends in the hallways. I will be reminded, we did it, all of us together, Vikings." Thank you very much. Thank you so much for coming and presenting. I was very excited to see and hear all about this. Does anyone have any questions for Erin? Yeah.
When are you going to do it again?
So we are working, so GeoCamp has an outfit in Iceland, and then they also started one in Denmark. So we are also working with the University of Maine to try to develop a field-based program with a research station located just outside of Copenhagen.
That's awesome.
So hopefully for next year, we, we will see. Oh, that's fantastic. Thanks for sharing the magic of Iceland. Yes, yeah. Thank you for having us. And this is associated with a class that these students have been taking all year, correct? Yeah, so, so all of the students have taken the Maine Arctic Climate Studies course. Some of them are enrolled now, some of them have been enrolled, you know, like in the past courses, and so they are, they are able to, you know, to have that opportunity. We want to, I mean, if we could do it, you know, a larger bunch of kids, but we find that the smaller bit is a little bit better for something like this, and so, yeah. Yes.
Erin, I remember Jen had on Facebook trying to solicit help for kids.
Yes.
Financial, did, did the school pay for this, or did they have to pay, their families have to pay?
So GeoCamp Iceland actually subsidized quite a bit of it. The total cost per student was $2,100, and that included flights, all of the flights, all of the accommodations, all of the tickets into, everything that they needed, tickets to get into, all of the transportation. We had a vehicle at our disposal that we could use, all of it. And a lot of teachers at the high school actually gave and supported us. Principal Ackley also supported us significantly. Some of our parents, Whitney Condit, who has been a champion of Auburn teachers, also supported us. So there were a number, you know, of different people that all came together to do that. What I'm looking for in the future is to try to get some funding through some competitive grant process, we'll see what we can do. But we like to try to keep the cost at about $2,000 if we can, because then it makes it manageable. We, we are looking for, you know, kids that come from working, you know, hard-working families, you know, that don't necessarily have $2,000, you know, like to give, so that's, that's what we, what we try to do. So we thank, we thank all of our funders and teachers who helped us. That's really amazing, especially considering how expensive Iceland is. Yeah, how expensive it is, but that's the bonus. If you're staying in a place like that, you know, like a lot of places, you go to these like hotels or whatever, and they're nice, but I think it robs students of a more authentic experience that they could have, although beneficial, it's beautiful, like I don't want to like bash on anything, it, it really is amazing what they can gain. We have found a lot of success with this model, because the kids are like, they're laying their heads. Ole said to them the first day, he said, you're laying your heads where PhDs sleep every single night. That's quite something, you know, so, yeah, that's what, what we like to do. Any other questions? What, what an amazing opportunity. I think it's, I think it's incredible, and I, I just think it's, I saw some of the pictures on Instagram as you guys were traveling, and I definitely heard about this sulfur smell from some of the kids when they got back. But I just think it's, I just think it's amazing, and I'm so glad that you were able to come and share it, because I wanted to make sure that people knew that stuff like this was happening here, so. That's awesome. Thank you so much, we really appreciate it. All right, good night.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, we do not have any school committee student representatives here tonight, so moving on to our superintendent's report, Dr. Doris.
Thank you, Chairperson Albert. Well, as you know, another school year is coming to an end, so I wanted to share some end-of-the-year dates with you. The last day of school for our students in grades K through 11 will be Monday, June 16th, and as in the past, that is an early dismissal day. We have dismissal at 10:30 for seventh, grades seven through 11, and at 11:30 for grades K through six. The last day of school for our pre-K students will be Friday, June 13th, and the last day for staff will be Wednesday, June 18th. And then we also have two upcoming graduation events. We have the Edward Little High School graduation ceremony, that's happening on Saturday, May 31st, at 7:00 PM at EL. And we also have Auburn Adult Education, holding its graduation ceremony on Thursday, June 5th, at 7:00 PM at EL. And then the last event of the year on our calendar will be the Budget Validation Referendum. That's actually not the last, but it's coming in the last couple of weeks. It'll be Tuesday, June 10th, and we will be doing our annual postcard, that's going out next week, to remind all of our citizens in Auburn to get out there and vote for the school budget this year. And that's it for my report.
Great. Thank you. So moving on to our committee reports, so the Finance Subcommittee minutes are linked on the agenda, and since I'm the only one here from that subcommittee, I will give a quick summation of the minutes. So we discussed and voted on approving the addition of the Child Development Services-funded positions for the Auburn School Department, and Laura Shaw came and spoke about that, how we will be taking on children three to five in need of special services in the district starting this fall. And so the Finance Committee approved that. That does not have any sort of fiscal impact, though, to, to the school budget, because that is subsidized position, CDS-funded. And then we also discussed, Dr. Doris had done some research about other school districts providing compensation structures for substitute teachers, providing a stipend for substitute teachers when ed techs are asked to cover classrooms. And so we discussed as a committee and voted to approve a compensation structure for ed techs who substitute as, as teachers at a rate of $25 per half-day and $50 per full day. Again, this does not have a fiscal impact, so not something that the full committee needed to vote on, but something that I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of. And then we, we did a childcare update and reviewed all the monthly financials. Anyone have any questions about any of that? Pat?
The pay that the ed techs receive is on top of their regular pay, right?
Correct. Yep, it's in addition to. Any other questions? Okay. The Curriculum Subcommittee Agenda and Minutes are linked. Corinne, do you want to give a quick summary of the minutes from that meeting?
Yes, there's a lot to download with this, but there is a, a new Maine law that is transitioning CDS students ages three to five into the local school systems. And they, other schools have, all of the schools have to have it completed by, by July 1st, 2028, and our lovely director, Laura Shaw, said, let's do it now, because, and so it was a very in-depth meeting about what that transition's going to look like, what supports will be needed. Again, it's not fiscally hitting our budget, because it's coming from, it's state-funded. But doing it early like this is going to be helpful, giving us resources, where some people might be scrambling later, we're going to be hitting the ground running, and I'm really quite pleased and proud of our, our special ed department.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Corinne? Okay, and last, we have the Facilities Subcommittee Agenda and Minutes linked. Scott, do you want to give us a quick, quick summary of the Facilities Subcommittee meeting?
Certainly. Yep, we just kind of reviewed over the, the criteria that we put forth in the Advisory Committee for the Sixth Grade Inclusion to AMS. We talked about what we would, how we're going to work with Harriman and develop a plan for, one, developing the membership, and two, reaching out and making that connection with Harriman to start that, that planning process. And pleased to say that we'll be meeting with Harriman, Dr. Doris, Amanda, and myself tomorrow to start mapping that out, so that we have something to come back to the Facilities Committee, as well as we also started to talk about developing some of the communication of the Sixth Grade Inclusion to start getting some understanding out there and soliciting the membership for that, and how we're going to be progressing with that.
Great. Thank you. So moving on, we do not have any old business, so new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUB-GBJ Personnel Records and Files for a Second Reading and Approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Quinn, do I have a second?
Quinn, do I have a second? Corinne? Any questions, discussion on this policy before we vote a second time? All right, all those in favor of approving poli... Oh, do you have a question?
Oh.
Oh. Getting ahead of me, Pat. Okay, so all those in favor of approving policy AUB GBJ Personnel Records and Files for a Second Reading and Approval. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUB EBCE School Closings and Cancellations for a Second Reading and Approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pat?
Second.
Corinne? Any questions, discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of approving policy AUB EBCE School Closings and Cancellations for a Second Reading and Approval. Motion carries. And then, I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUB GCF Professional Staff Hiring for a Second Reading and Approval. Do I have a motion? Jay, do I have a second? Quinn? Any questions, discussion on this one? I think the only thing, when I went back and looked at it a second time, I think we're missing one word in it. Where is it? Yeah, I think in the second paragraph, "school system and to locate the highest quality," we just need to add the word "the" in there.
We can fix that.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of approving policy AUB GCF Professional Staff Hiring for a Second Reading and Approval. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUB DJ Joint City of Auburn and Auburn School Department Procurement for a Second Reading and Approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Quinn? Pat, second. Any questions or further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy AUB DJ Joint City of Auburn and Auburn School Department Procurement for a Second Reading and Approval. Motion carries. We have our list of our upcoming meetings, and do I have any future agenda items and requests for information? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Quinn, do I have a second? Jay, all those in favor? We are adjourned at 6:30 on the dot. Thank you, everyone.